And address for the record and keep your comments to within five minutes and in good decor. Anyone? Seeing and hearing none, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee, for recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin with the Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center Program, the Health Careers Program. I'm very pleased to announce that four of our Health Career Program students from the Career Center have been accepted into Brown University's Warren Alpert School of Medicine Pathways Program. Ariana Hay, Miriam Kaba, Azalea Mueller, and Kristi Senthavong will take part in the seven-session program taking place at the Brown Medical School Campus, as well as through the Physician Assistant Program at Johnson and Wales University and Bryant University. Each student will be paired with a medical student mentor and will receive hands-on clinical experience, as well as have the opportunity to participate in a medical shadowing program. Congratulations to these amazing students on this impressive accomplishment. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Louis Rodriguez, who is a social worker at Wensocket High School. Louis was named the Rhode Island Social Worker of the Year for 2020, 2021. I'm going to read a note from one of Louis's colleagues at Wensocket High School, Melissa Lorenson, who is the psychologist at Wensocket High School. She writes, "As the secondary coordinator of social workers and psychologists for the Wensocket Education Department, I've had the great pleasure of supervising Louis Rodriguez as a social worker at Wensocket High School. Mr. Rodriguez is exceptional in his dedication to the children and families of Wensocket. He has dedicated himself to students who are particularly at risk for academic failure, working primarily with students with behavior and emotional disorders and students that are English-language learners. He speaks five languages and utilizes these skills in order to reach out to our most needy students and families, whose lack of communication skills prevent them from accessing their education. Mr. Rodriguez's workday never ends because he works tirelessly to support students. He spends hours after-school tutoring students and connecting families with valuable resources. In my 26 years as a school psychologist, I have met no other social worker who was more caring and relentless in their pursuit of providing social work services to children and their families." And I'm not sure if Louis is here. I don't see, is Louis, is that, is this Louis?
Hey, Louis!
That was perfect timing, Louis. Perfect timing. Louis, if you would step to the podium, that would be wonderful. Louis, on behalf of the Wensocket Education Department, I want to congratulate you for being a truly incredible educator, social worker, you name it. You wear a lot of different hats at Wensocket High School, and I want to thank you for all you do. Congratulations for being named the 2021 Rhode Island Social Worker of the Year. We are so very, very lucky and very just amazing to have you here in Wensocket, working with our kids and their families. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do. I have here a certificate that I'd like to present to you, and I also have a citation from the Senate on behalf of Senator Roger Picard. So if you'd step up to the stage here, Louis, I would love to present you with these two awards.
Can we have a picture for the people with everybody?
You want a front?
Front.
We're having trouble with this wall this time.
We are. Congratulations.
Spoken on the phone, never met.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the October 5, 2022, special open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the October 12, 2022, open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections, deletions, changes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any committee member want to take anything out of order for discussion? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into communications. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. This evening, we have some presentations for you and for the community. As you're aware, we have, in each of our schools, our principals have established student attendance teams in the effort of increasing and improving student attendance. We've been doing this for many years now in Wensocket, and each principal, prior to the school year starting, they provide me with a calendar of different types of events that they have in their schools that span the school year around what they're doing to improve the attendance of their students. In addition to that, as you're aware, with the new anti-bullying policy, part of that policy was to have building principals present to the school committee what they're doing in their buildings. Again, there's a calendar of events that they're doing from the beginning of the year through to the end of the year, and it changes. It'll naturally change during the year. But they're going to be presenting those, that information about what they're doing to promote a kind environment and to promote anti-bullying in their schools. So we're going to start here. We have Globe Park, Wensocket High School, Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center, Harris Elementary, and Hamlet Middle School. We're going to start off with Jen Renegaldo from Harris. Sorry, Nichelle.
Perfect.
We're going to start off with Jen Renegaldo from Hamlet Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. So Nichelle's my helper. Sorry, I'm by myself. I'm going to just go over some of the things we're doing at Hamlet Middle School to improve attendance. I don't have a slideshow. I have handouts. Sorry. So this year at Hamlet Middle School, thank you, we have an attendance team that consists of myself, my guidance counselors, and the SRO, and also Nicole Bullock, who's the attendance officer. We've identified 47 total students that we have placed on attendance plans for this year. That's 8% of our students, because we have 565 total students at Hamlet. So what I gave you right there is a breakdown by grade of how many students we have on attendance plans. So we have 13 sixth graders, 13 seventh graders, and 21 eighth graders. If you look at the bottom of the first sheet, it breaks it down by percentages by grade for attendance. The second page is the actual attendance plan that we do with the students. So the guidance counselors and the behavioral interventionists and myself, we write these plans with the students. We go over them with the students every three weeks. I run a new report, and we see if the students are either improving with their attendance or they're not improving. If they're improving, they get some type of reward that they choose. If they're not improving, they get some kind of consequence that they don't choose. I choose for them. So if you look, when we write the plan, they have to come up with three goals that they have to improve their attendance, and we actually go over with them things like, where do you live? Do you walk? Okay. Or do you take the bus? So if you walk, we actually put on our ways and say, how long does it take for you to walk? Okay, so 20 minutes. Okay, so then, if you have to leave your house at this time, what time do you have to get up in the morning? Should you eat breakfast? Yes, before you go. Should you shower in the morning? No, maybe at night. Get your clothes out the night before. So we go over a bunch of strategies with them and actually write times down of when they should be leaving their house, so they get to school on time and get here. And then if you look at the third page of the plan, it actually tracks how many days they were absent versus how many days in the month. So they get their percentage of how much they're in school, so then we can kind of figure out if they're improving or not. So that's what I gave you. We have perfect attendance every month. So for the month of September, I had 89 students at Hamlet that had perfect attendance. We came and we took a picture. We have it by grade, so we have 35 sixth graders with perfect attendance, 33 seventh graders, 21 eighth graders, and they get a reward. And this month, we took them outside as their reward for a period and let them play, not all at once, by grade, because I don't want 90 kids outside at once. So each month, we do that. We run the report, and they get an award and some kind of a reward, whether it be free time in the gym, outside time in the winter. Obviously, we wouldn't do that. So that's what we're doing to improve our attendance. We have, for the month of September, we had 16% of our students had perfect attendance. Are there any questions about what we're doing for attendance? Yes.
Jen, this is pretty good, what you're doing. I'm just wondering, this attendance success plan, would you be sharing this with the parents or getting them involved?
Yes, so the parents, if you, it goes home to the parents, so the parents know that they're on the plan. Absolutely.
Now, how often do you update? We have 47 now, but obviously that can climb.
Yeah, every few weeks, we run a new report, and we make sure if there's anyone new that maybe wasn't on the report from last time and now has a number of days, we would add those students. So from three weeks ago to now, I added four students.
Okay.
So we run it every three weeks.
Sure. Great.
Chairman, Jen?
Vice Chair Burke.
The second page, the success plan, you meet with them every three weeks?
Correct.
Do they redo, do they do a new success plan?
We meet with them to go over their numbers, like have they improved or have they not? And then after three times meeting with them, if the plan is not working, we write a new plan, because obviously that plan doesn't work. So we'll write something different.
They write down, I've been present so many days. That'll change after three weeks.
Correct. So the third sheet is the one that's by month.
That's right, that's for the whole year, yeah.
That's the one we look at to look at their data. We look at their data with them. So... Do anyone have any other questions about attendance?
Anyone? Thank you very much.
No? Okay. So, thank you. So now I can go on to bullying? Okay. Nichelle, I need you again.
Yep.
Sorry. Thanks.
Next.
Thank you.
So this year, we have a, our anti-bullying committee is actually, it's kind of impressive. We have, right now, we have 50 students that are part of our committee. We actually have to have the committee meetings in the cafeteria. So the first page that I gave you is, it's broken down by grade. So we have 26 graders, 14 seventh graders, and 16 eighth graders, part of our committee. We meet once a month, and, thank you, we sent out a anti-bullying survey to all the students. And if you look at the third page in, so the second page in is what's on our TVs. It's a picture of the students at our last anti-bullying committee meeting, doing activity together. The third page shows the results of our anti-bullying survey that we had sent out to all the students. I just wrote the percentages next to all the questions, because the chart that I have, if I don't print it out in color, you won't be able to tell the circle which is which. So I did it like this for you, so you can see the difference. If you look at the responses, the one that I am probably the most proud of is question number six. How many days of school have you missed because of bullying? And 92.1% of the students said never. So that number is pretty impressive. Number four, how have you been bullied? And 61.8% of the students said they have never been bullied in my school. We're going to take these results to the next anti-bullying committee and look at where bullying happens the most often, and then try to come up with strategies with the students about how to curb where bullying is occurring in the school. So 74.2% of bullying occurs in the hallway. Of course, it does, because teachers are in passing time. They say things to each other when adults are not close to them. And 66.9% happens outside. Those are the two places that bullying most occurs. So we're going to look at those two first and figure out with the students how we can stop bullying from occurring in those two spots. But if you want to look at all their percentages, I know I don't have too much time, so I didn't want to go over all of them with you. I just wanted to go over some of the ones I felt.
Jen, do you know where outside is? Is that in the school campus outside? Or is it Kendrick or elsewhere?
It didn't, they didn't specify. I'm assuming it's outside, probably maybe school grounds. That's where I'm going to focus on, outside school, before school and after school. The next page is just things that we're doing around the school, that ideas we have gotten from the students, team banners, door decorating, anti-bullying poster contest. And we have a picnic table that we had purchased last year from the anti-bullying committee. They started kind of drawing on it. We need to finish painting it this year, and it's in the front of the building. And that was from, that was an idea from the students. The students this year, they want to wear T-shirts with positive quotes, so we're going to design T-shirts for the students on the anti-bullying committee. And I'm going to, well, I'm not buying them. I'm going to put a requisition order in for Brad to buy them for me.
There you go, Mr. Perrier.
Sorry. They want to make an anti-bullying video to play on the school TV, so that some of the students are going to do that. And then the last thing is, teach students what bullying is, why it occurs, and why students bully. So a lot of students don't realize what bullying is. Bullying is a term that's thrown around a lot when most of the time, it's not bullying. So I get bullying reports, and most of the time, it's not bullying. It's students being mean to each other just on that day. It's not a pattern of behavior that has occurred. So one of the things we're really trying to teach is, why do kids bully? And what can we do when they're bullied? Strategies that they can use when they feel like they're being bullied. That's what they're doing in the, that's what we're doing. And I was going to have you do an activity, but I think I'm out of time. So I think you're off the hook.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone have any questions about what we're doing for bullying at the school?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that I am amazed that all this is going on, and I'm very proud of you and the students for making this and going further with it. So keep going. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, just quickly, I think the best number is, best question, I should say, is number seven. Do you have an adult you trust you can go to? Now, 78.7 is pretty good. Be nice if that could be a little higher, but...
Yeah, it would be nice for me if it was higher. I don't accept that number. I want it to be more...
They do feel very positive about the adults in the school, so that's a good thing.
You'd also might want to put not only an adult, but another individual, even a student, because some folks won't speak to the adults they know, but they might speak to a fellow student. They want to tweak that.
Correct. I agree. Okay, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Well done.
Next up is actually Nichelle Kennel from Globe Park. I mean it this time.
I actually made a little PowerPoint presentation.
So we go down there? Yes, yes.
Same one in here.
It's on here, I think. Isn't it? I know, just the window's too small for support.
Oh, it works.
There it is. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I talk really loud, so this is going to bother me. I apologize. So to start off with my attendance, everyone received my plan that was, of course, submitted to Dr. McGee. So I'm just going to kind of highlight the positives of my program, because I invested all year last year changing the culture of my building from more of a negative mindset to more of a positive one. So in doing so, trying to build positivity around everything we're doing. So like all schools, we are making phone calls to those people that have absentee issues. We're sending out letters. Well, we did it a little differently. So I am the only person making phone calls, not my social workers, and I'm doing it from a place of, what can I do to help you? We also send out a parent survey three times a year, asking why their children are missing school. And we get responses, everything from transportation issues to asthma. And we try to work within my means to accommodate as many parents as possible. We also made an Attendance Matters slide deck strictly for the students. And in that is where we put all of our positivity components in it. We started doing more of a holistic, classroom-based, whole attendance, so they could earn rewards there. We also did individual monthly awards. So if they get perfect attendance, they're going to have their name called up at an assembly. They're going to get a certificate and a pencil. When the whole class earns an award, they have the whole class to get buy-in. They get to vote on 101 different things that the whole class may want to do. And there's everything on there, from yoga with Ms. St. Vincent to kickball with their principal. I have every, like, so much buy-in around positivity to get them to come to school. It is amazing. I have a BI that's actually a certified music teacher in another country, and he's going to give of his time as part of this, if they want time with him, having a music class. My after-school programming, CCF, said that they would come in and do whole-group board games and things to that nature. I borrowed from every person in my building to come up with these 101 things. We also sent home an attendance flyer. I uploaded the English version. It did take me a little bit to translate it. I have four languages spoken on my campus. Well, I actually have more than that, but four, that I tried to translate everything in. And I translated it in Spanish and shared it with all of the other elementary principals as well. And it went out, and then my pocketed families got their own copies as needed. And it talks about chronic absenteeism, the effects on education, educational gaps, anxiety gaps, and the social-emotional components of not being with their peers, and how that also has negative attributes or could cause negative, you know, issues later in life and things to that nature. So trying to just encompass everything. With my no bullying, we also did kind of a reverse in promoting positivity. This is the plan that I, of course, submitted, and we did, beginning of the year, I give the kids, and it's planned, two days of really cool Mrs. Kennel, and then a day of hardcore Mrs. Kennel. And I spent all day in grade-level assemblies going over building expectations. My building spent all year last year developing expectations for the whole building in every setting, itinerants, cafeteria, hallway. We created posters. We added visuals for all of my special ed and culturally responsive mindsets, and we have posted everywhere. So then with that, we also just had Al the Respect Guy, who does all the ROR assemblies. He was in my building just last week, and ROR, you know, means respect others and act responsibly. We also do student and staff of the month, and we get really nice fancy certificates from Roger Picard, from the State Department. Their names are called up at an assembly. We do a great big thing around it. We also established last year Gator Good Deeds. And each teacher has been challenged to give out five Gator Good Deeds every two weeks. If Johnny, who is typically a nudge but does something really awesome, I want him to have a Gator Good Deed. I want to celebrate that awesomeness. When I do my assemblies, they'll get called up. They get their certificate. They get their pencil. And I'm also adding those students' names to my bi-weekly parent newsletter that goes out. They're going to have a Gator Good Deed, Staff of the Month, and attendance. And I'm just going to stick their names in there, because we need to promote all of it. We also do many, many, many seasonal kind of school-wide kindness activities. This month, of course, is our bully prevention month, and we have a huge tree painted on the outside of the cafeteria doors, and it's known as the Kindness Tree. So every month, we kind of highlight a different kind of kindness. And as the students meet with their social workers or BI's, if they have something positive to say about another student, they're given, like, right now it's fall, so they're given a leaf or an apple. They fill it out while they're with them, and then they go and they hang it right on the door. And that way, the students can come by and they can see who's done something kind for someone else. We also do, like, fill-the-bucket activities. Every door right now has "Have You Fill the Bucket?" on it, and it's just reminding us to increase our compliments and things to that nature. And then, of course, every building has restorative practices. We did kind of take it one step further in creating what we call think sheets for self-reflection, which I did share with all of the elementary admin, and we tied it to our district initiative of the three questions. So now... Um, so now, when a student is, what I'm gonna say, wronged, no matter how that looks, maybe I hit Dr. Holt, I have to go and do a reflective think sheet. Who did I wrong? Why? What did I gain? Have I apologized? And how I can make, um, a reprimand? How can I make it better? How can I fix that? And each student fills it out, or if they are a struggle writer, maybe the BI will script it for them, things to that nature. And they have a little conference with them and the student that they wronged, and then it goes home for the parents to see. So, anything we can to promote the social emotional components of kindness and our actions, and keep it all positive. I know I talk really fast. Does anyone have any questions? No?
Good evening, everyone. Um, so, at the high school, we are working on everything through building relationships, both with teachers, with students, student to student, every type of relationship you could have at the high school through a pro-attendance, but also an anti-bullying effort. So, um, I attached, uh, so I put a lot of slides in here. I know I don't have the time to go through all of them, so you can, you can look at them at your leisure. Um, so our attendance plan is linked in the, in the top bullet there. Um, we have an attendance team at the high school that meets bi-weekly. Um, we have an attendance team that follows a tiered approach in tracking students, starting with data that's pulled by guidance counselors, calls home, meetings with students, as well as parent meetings, um, that are in-person. We are also working to build student and parent awareness through freshman orientation, through grade-level assemblies that are ongoing, as well as through, um, the ways that we can, we can message families in bulk. So, in short, giving them a reason to come to school, encouraging them to come to school, encouraging them to come on time for school, staying in school, as well as supporting everything, um, that they need to be successful while they're in the building. So, the next couple of slides, these are some of the slides that we did share with the students in the first week of school to try to provide them with the why, and why they need to come to school and why it's important for them to be in school every day. Um, so students who miss no more than five percent each year, stay engaged, are successful, and remain on track to graduate. Missing ten percent means that it negatively impact how you're doing, and then you're also considered chronically absent. Then we have a conversation about what it means to be chronically absent, as well as how, even if you're labeled chronically absent in September, you can improve your attendance rate so that you're not chronically absent, say, in November or December. This is now a famous slide on the TVs in the high school. I don't know if it's gonna animate here, but, um, we've talked a lot about what it means to come to school on time. So, Jen talked about setting goals with the students, coming to school five minutes earlier, getting out of bed five minutes earlier, changing your routine. It's not different at the high school. So, we talk about the sweet spot from seven forty-five to seven fifty, where you have time to socialize, you may have time to get breakfast, you can... But the key is, make your way to class. Socialize while you're walking. Then, seven fifty-five, seven fifty to seven fifty-five, you're cutting it close. You can still walk and talk, but you should be going directly to class. And then, the danger zone. Uh, no time for socializing, head directly to class. So, in the morning, um, when we open the doors at seven forty-five, um, I stand at the front door along with another administrator, as well as our SRO, or whoever else is available in the morning. And we literally use these words as the students are passing by in the morning, so that they're fully aware of how much time they have to get to class every morning. So, um, they're getting sick of hearing, "It's the danger zone. It's the danger zone. You need to go. You need to go." So, after eight o'clock, I'm sorry, I haven't asked you for money yet. Yet. So, um, we are, we are working really hard on trying to get them into class at eight AM and realizing what it means to be walking into class eight oh five, eight ten. Not only are you being disruptive to yourself and what's going on in that first period of class, but you're also disrupting the learning of everyone else. So, just really trying to be positive, but also I understand what the ramifications are for being late to school every day. And again, as simple as you come every day, you go to all of your classes, you pass your classes. In terms of behavior, we're keeping it simple this year. Again, all tied to positive and positives and success, simply behave, attend, and try. Um, we're really trying to reinforce that if you show up every day and you try your very best, you will pass your classes and you will be in line to graduate. Obviously, we also communicate a lot of the supports that we have, whether that be homework help, whether that be supports with, um, social emotional learning, advisory, staying for extra help. Um, but again, keeping it simple in the sense of doing your very best, showing up every day, coming prepared, and actually trying and giving a hundred percent. Also, um, especially with the freshmen, um, making sure that they understand and that there are under, there are opportunities, multiple opportunities to get involved, and why they should get involved. Um, really trying to reinforce that if students are involved and actively engaged in school, they want to come to school, and it positively impacts how they're gonna, how they're gonna interact with one another, how they're gonna do in their classes, as well as how they're going to, you know, end up at the end of each particular year. Quickly on bullying, um, so we are, we are working very hard at the high school for the, for the last couple of years in, in building student-to-student relationships and really utilizing mediation from a student perspective. While, um, there is a lot of power in the, in the adults that we, that we have in the building that are, that are de-escalating, working on conflict resolution, working on whatever situations are going on in families or with students. Um, and sometimes it's, you know, it could just be that someone's having a bad day. Um, we've, I'm, I'm also very proud of the fact that we've grown our peer mentor program this year, over eighty students. Um, they are actively involved with our, with our other students through advisory, through peer mediation meetings, through teen mental health first aid training. Um, we're working on implementing additional restorative practices, as well as SEL in the high school, with the overarching focus of encouraging and supporting positive peer relationships. Um, it just gives us another layer where sometimes something's going on, where they're just not really comfortable talking to an adult, but they're more than willing to talk to a peer. And it might mean that they need a half hour in a closed room, and we're able to mediate a situation or to avoid something escalating into something bigger. Um, the peer mentors have been great with our freshmen. Um, our freshmen have really gotten off to a really great start. Um, they, they're, they're comfortable. We've worked really hard in making sure that that transition from middle school was as comfortable as can be, especially coming out of COVID, not being in school a lot in person for the last couple of years for some of them. Um, we're continuing to meet with the grade levels. Um, it's the, it's the best we can do in terms of numbers. Um, bringing one grade level into the auditorium means you have almost five hundred people in the building. So, we're, we're really utilizing as best we can, small group communication as well through advisory, through other, through other means i- in terms of communicating and continuing to reinforce, um, the, the goals. So, there are some of our peer mentors. Um, there are their new shirts for this year. Um, thank you, Gigi. Um, we have eighty students. Again, that's double what we had last year. Um, so our, our students wanna be involved. They wanna lead. They wanna help. They wanna be role models. Um, so we definitely rely on them. Um, they are meeting weekly with their ninth-grade advisories. Um, each of the advisories has two or three mentors attached to it. So, they have multiple opportunities for relationship building. They have activities that they're working on, a lot of team-building type things, um, as well as ongoing training and support, not just for the ninth graders, but also for the peer mentors. The peer mentors are reporting back what the students are telling them is going on in school. And then we're adjusting those activities accordingly, based upon the data that we're collecting in that moment. Um, that's, that's not to say that we're not, um, in, in partnership with a lot of great outside agencies as well. Um, we're working with the Collins Foundation, Sojourner House, um, the Institute for Nonviolence, as well as the Teen Mental Health First Aid. Um, we are the high, uh, first high school in Rhode Island that is teen mental health and first aid trained. Not that you haven't heard that a thousand times, but I figured I'll mention it one more time, um, because it's, um, you know, something we're really proud of. Um, that is a video. Um, she, um, recorded a video. It's, it's seven and a half minutes. Um, if you have not seen it, it is definitely worth a watch. Um, so I included it for you. Um, I know that time constraints will not allow us to play it tonight. But, um, basically, it's a self-reflection on what it means to the students to be peer mentors and how they're involving their community. We're still doing a lot of work at the high school on restorative practices. Um, we have, um, ongoing training, um, in conferencing. We did that, um, at the, uh, the, uh, middle of September, last month. We were able to put together a high school team that was made up of, um, my administrative staff, as well as teachers, students, and community partners. Um, we are working on the, the topic in the skill of conferencing and conflict resolution directly tied to restorative practice, which will lead to peer mediation. Um, we have a high school-based restorative coach. Um, we are working to form a universal support team, which will meet monthly, and one-to-one coaching, which is being provided to teachers in an ongoing cycle. So, we are continuing to implement the different types of restorative practice within the high school. This is not new, um, to, to all of you. However, um, we're continuing to reinforce why we're doing this, um, not just with staff and students, but also with families. Uh, everything at the high school revolves around improving relationships, not just within the building, but within the community. Working on shared leadership, empowering our students, um, as seen, not just with peer mentors, but with our athletes, within our clubs, in every other way that they wanna get involved. Um, we're really working to try to build those connections that will lead to increased engagement in giving students a reason to come to school, motivating them to come to school and to try their best every day. And to not only try their best every day, but when they're having a bad day, be comfortable enough to come to one of us so that we can work with them on whatever is going on, uh, in that moment. Um, working on, um, continuing to bulk up our, our classes academically, providing students with, with every opportunity that they want. Uh, I'm proud to, to say that we've, uh, added in additional advanced placement classes, um, for this year. We're gonna continue to do so going forward. Um, we're strengthening our, our co-teaching model within the special education department and really just providing that safe space, because in order for them to really soar, they have to be able to take ownership and responsibility for their learning, which is, uh, directly tied to the district strategic plan. Here's just a quick graphic on, um, the difference between punitive and restorative discipline. Um, working, working with students to help them understand why they are given a consequence, not just assigning a consequence and moving on, but really hoping that the lesson isn't in the consequence, but it's in why the consequence is being given, so that the, um, the, the action doesn't repeat itself. Talking about the, the proactive approach to restorative practices, again, building relationships, saying the same thing over and over again, positive interactions, and really building trust. Um, that is something that there's been a lot of growth in the last two years in regards to our students trusting not only one another, but trusting the adults in the building. Um, you know, piggybacking off of something that both, um, my, uh, both Nichelle and Jen said, really working to ensure that the adult, the students in the building have at least one adult that they can go to, each and every day. And really moving to a proactive approach, so that we can stay away from a responsive approach. And last, but certainly not least, continuing to promote the idea of, if you see something, say something, so that we can work with all the tools that we have, both for conflict resolution and just if you're having a bad day, to make sure that we are providing the best we can at, at the high school each and every day for our students. And I know I just said a whole lot. I went through fifteen slides in like five minutes. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions that you have. All right. Am I off the hook? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dr. McGee. Okay, so I'm about nine weeks in. Okay, so go easy on me. Just wanna remind everyone of that. So, our newly-formed, uh, Harris Elementary School Attendance Committee is made up of myself. Uh, we have some resource teachers on there, um, a reading specialist, a fourth-grade teacher, and my social worker is, is on there with me. Um, our attendance plan for the year has our universal supports and then a tiered system for when we are reaching out to families and finding out how we can better support them coming to school. And our highlights of our plan are right here. So, uh, I'm currently, uh, running reports and tracking attendance to see who is popping up as, uh, chronically absent right away. The other thing that we're noticing is that kids are not getting to school on time, and they're leaving very early. So, we're gonna try to start to do some incentives at the school to mitigate that. We're gonna have monthly prizes for students with amazing attendance. Um, we're gonna be giving some pencils away in the morning up until nine fifteen. So, if you are at school on time, you'll get yourself a nice smelly pencil. Uh, next month, we'll start our Beehive Awards. Uh, we're, the, each classroom will get the letters for the word Beehive, and we'll post them outside every time every student is in that classroom. And the first class who gets to spell the word Beehive gets a pizza lunch. And if students have missed three days in a row, our nurse is going to reach out to that family to see what is going on. So, that is our attendance plan thus far. Any questions? Our anti-bullying plan is, uh, similar to Nichelle's. We're really trying to promote positive interactions with the students and positive interactions between students and staff. I have started a book of the month program at school. And, um, each month, the students are all reading a picture book that is going to promote positive character traits. It is also trying to introduce more culturally relevant characters into the literature in the school. And this month, it is a book called More Than Peach. And our character trait of the month is leadership. And we're gonna be celebrating the students who have shown leadership at our end-of-the-month assembly on Friday. We have our Golden Spatula Awards in the cafeteria, promoting positive behaviors and interactions towards the adults and peers and the students who are cleaning up and listening and following directions. That class wins the Golden Spatula. And at the end of the month, the class who has had the most Golden Spatulas gets an award that they hang in their classroom. And we're using restorative practices, uh, throughout the school. We've had, uh, some refreshers with Meg Parker. And she's using slide decks, uh, to promote those positive interactions. And we're also working with, um, Gigi DiBello and Project Aware to help give the staff more resources and more things to pull from to promote that positive social emotional learning. If I do get a report of bullying, uh, this is kind of the steps that we follow. Um, whoever submits the report, it goes to an investig- investigation, whether it's myself or one of my social workers or a teacher doing the investigation. We interview the students, um, and then we determine if bullying did occur. And then we plan for next steps with the students to try to, um, restore the relationship that might have been harmed. Questions? All right. Thank you.
So, I, I wanna just thank each principal for doing, uh, an amazing job presenting, uh, to the committee and, and to the community, all of the proactive things that you're doing in your schools to promote and to improve student attendance and to promote kindness and establishing environments that promote, um, students being good to one another. Um, you know, the, the, I'm really glad that we're doing this now. We, we, we haven't done these presentations before. And, you know, oftentimes, you hear the negative things that happen, um, across the district. But this was an example tonight of the hard work that my principals, my teachers, and students are doing here in this district to promote a sense of, um, of, of equity, belonging. Um, and it, and it's just, it's, it's incredible. a sense of equity, belonging, and it's just, it's incredible. So I want to thank them. I believe the next school committee meeting, we're going to have more schools who will be presenting to you as well. But again, I want to just thank the principals and the administrators, and the staff, and the students for all they do to make this district a great, the great district that it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item under Communications, Dr. Holt?
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo and I have put together the district and elementary and secondary priorities that we have been working on in the district for the last three years under our current strategic plan. As the principals all were discussing, these initiatives aren't something that just are made up. They're a part of the district strategic plan and a part of the school improvement plan. You'll see here for our elementary and our secondary, we had two big areas that we were looking at. The first one is our ELA adoption, and Sue, if you want to discuss the ELA.
Absolutely. In our elementary classrooms, we're utilizing a core reading program, which is known as ReadyGen. It is a program that is based on authentic texts, and when we say authentic, those would be books that would be found in common libraries across the nation. We want to put those books in the hands of children, so that they do have experiences that lead them to natural reading. However, that's not the full experience of an elementary classroom. We spend quite a bit of our time working in small groups to work on differentiated instruction and really meeting the individual needs of our readers. That initiative is supported by technology in the classroom, and also a program called Foundations. Foundations is an early phonological process that our teachers in grades K to five use to support one of our biggest professional development pieces, which is in the center, and we're just going to highlight those briefly, but that one is called the Right to Read Legislation, which we highlighted for you folks last year at one of our school committee meetings. That is an intensive 60-hour proficiency training in what we call the Science of Reading. Those strategies talk about the five components of reading and how they need to be taught systematically and explicitly. The strategies that happen in our elementary classrooms are really being brought to the surface, both through continuous coaching. We have great instructional coaches and innovation coaches that are working with teachers to really push that initiative along, as well as making sure we have materials that align to that need. At our secondary level, we have been using a platform called StudySync in our ELA classrooms here at the middle school, and we've had some great success with that. Last year, we piloted that program at the high school and with other products as well, and that product was also selected to be used at the high school. So we now have a nice continuum of reading from the middle school to the high school in ELA. When I say a platform, the product is based in a platform, but our students are not spending their entire ELA block on a computer. In fact, that program allows teachers the flexibility of dipping in and out of novel-based units, because we really do want our kids to be books in hands and really have the full experience of exploring full plot development, full character development, full story development, as well as the other pieces of comprehension and vocabulary.
And thank you, Sue. Going on from that, we were talking about continuity in our secondaries from sixth through 12th grade. That continued this past summer. Last year, we piloted a new math program into math and into AGA. AGA stands for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, which are now the required sequence for high school graduation. We, over the summer, purchased the new program. Thank you, Brad. And our teachers are excited and using our new platform that allows for flexibility for teachers when they're working with a small group of students who are struggling on a particular concept, to look back to where that concept originated from. If you're working on a sixth-grade concept, they can look back to, in fourth grade, where it might have started, and can supplement there to give differentiation or to support where students are in different levels. We continue to use our Eureka Math in our elementary schools. We've been using Eureka for, I'd say, maybe 10, 12 years. It's been a bit of time that we've been using Eureka, and we're going to continue to use Eureka in the math, in the elementary schools. In the center of the paper that we gave you, we are looking at the district priorities, and there's quite a bit here. It's not all of the district priorities, but there's just a few that we wanted to highlight. Sue mentioned, Mr. Rizzo mentioned, that we have amazing coaches in our classrooms. We also, this year, were able to utilize some of our ESAR funding to bring in what we're calling innovation coaches, and they're working in our classrooms side by side with teachers on academic teaming. And that just means bringing students to the table to have conversation about the academics that they're learning, so that all students have voice and can share in the conversation. We also have been continuing with our PSYOP model. That's a strategy model for our students who are multilingual learners. PSYOP actually stands for, I had to look it up. PSYOP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, and there are eight components to that protocol that assists teachers in helping students who are learning English as a second language. For instance, something such as having sentence stems. So if they're answering a question, they have the beginning of the sentence stem to help them answer the question, or pictures, or real-life objects that they can associate the name of the object with what they're seeing. We also are very excited for the last three years, and as a matter of fact, it started with the creation of our current strategic plan. We have been working alongside the Teaching and Learning Alliance. It's an organization from outside of Boston. They have been assisting us on our learning walks, and we've talked frequently with the committee about our learning walks and the invaluable information we receive when we're able to go out as a group and observe the teaching and learning in our classrooms. Most excited is the last, actually, just yesterday, we were able to conduct a learning walk where we had some teachers join us and were able to be a part of the conversation and observe other teachers' classrooms. It was really fantastic. Last, and for my side, and then we'll hop over back to Sue. You've heard a lot tonight about what the district is doing for our students' social emotional well-being. We've got another presentation after us that's going to continue that conversation, but it has been a strong priority in the district to ensure that students and staff are able to address academics, that they're ready to learn, and have the tools they need in order to be successful. Sue?
Goalbook.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Goalbook. We have purchased a platform called Goalbook for our elementary classroom teachers and also our K-12 resource teachers in special education. This platform helps teachers to dig into the standards and understand what it looks like and sounds like in action. So what does it mean to multiply by fractions? Goalbook has, gives examples and progress monitoring tools for teachers to dig into that standard. And this is our, we've actually used Goalbook for two years in two of our elementary schools that are CSIP schools, or schools that needed intervention, and it was so successful in those two schools, we purchased it for all elementary schools.
Is that to help with Eureka Math?
It can, yes.
I just don't know why you have a separate program from your math program. Sounds like it's separate.
It is separate. It just looks at the stand, just specific standards, and gives context about how the standard would look like and sound like if you needed to differentiate and help a student who's not at grade level. How can I bring it down so that they can be, have access to grade-level content? Yeah, great question.
Another district priority is the utilization of our ESAR funds, and one portion of the ESAR funds that we were awarded as one of a specific district within the state. I believe there are eight of us that were awarded additional funding to work on something called LEAP. And our LEAP work this year is looking at our multiple, our multi-tiered system of support, known as MTSS, and that is a support that we provide to students to give them the supports within the classroom and through the access of our specialists, enabling them to best meet their needs in the least restrictive environments. The MTSS system is fully developed in our elementary schools. We're quite proud of the work that has gone on at that level, and this year, we have worked to now bring that same element into our middle school, and with the hopes of continuing that next year at our high school. It's a heavy lift, it's a lot of work, but we're very proud of the team of individuals that have been working to get that off the ground. One of the biggest pieces that we don't want to leave out is making decisions for our children based on good data, looking at our data and using that data to inform the decisions we make in our instruction. We have several platforms that help us. Our universal screener is called STAR. It is given three times a year to all students, but then we also use it quite frequently for progress monitoring purposes. The next tool is the F&amp;P, which stands for the Fontis Empenel, and that's an oral inventory of students' reading. That's actually listening to a child read, looking at the text, and analyzing their miscues to understand exactly what precise information you can do to understand where the student might need support and encouragement. The last one is a CBM, that's a curriculum-based measure. That could be anything as simple as understanding if a student is having a difficulty with fluency and understanding their rate of reading, their speed of reading. Those are things that can actually impact comprehension. So we look at those closely. We'll bring those data pieces to the MTSS table if needed, but it also provides the teacher with a clear understanding of who is in front of them and how to best differentiate instruction within the classroom. The second box down is the Right to Read Legislation. I think we've highlighted this one quite a bit. We're very proud of it. We have the largest contingency of proficient teachers within the state, and we also have 10 certified dyslexia experts from the URI cohort. A very proud moment for us. And the last one is a grant that we were awarded. Don Morello and I have worked closely with Head Start over the years. It's a, it's a grant that we share in providing pre-K transitions to kindergarten, as well as some experiences for our children that are not fortunate enough to go to a preschool experience. We've offered playgroups and play and learn groups for families, and some work with Gigi DiBello on the Basics, which is an app to support families in preparing our young children for school. And we were very fortunate to work with the HES in receiving a grant, and through the Autism Project, to provide these apps free of charge to our families that will push out some really important information to help our kids prepare for our school experiences.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
Fifty-sixth transition, eighth to ninth transition, pre-K to kindergarten?
Yes, believe it or not, it's...
What exactly do you do?
Oh, so, so, you know, there's been some tremendous, yeah, in fact, one of the things that we've, you know, we've talked a lot about the pandemic and the impact on social emotional learning. There was an enormous impact on our youngest learners. Our children did not come to school prepared as they had in previous years. In fact, it's not something that we're noting here, that we're noting at nationwide. We have many students that are not coming to school potty-trained. That's a significant step backwards. So if that's an indicator, you can imagine the preparation that they are for a learning experience, the ability to sit and listen to a story, to understand what organized and meaningful play is. Our children are missing those experiences, and through this specialized grant, we're not only able to provide opportunities for our families who cannot otherwise have it, but we're also able to communicate with all of the service providers within One Socket, not just One Socket's preschool programs, which are really taking off very nicely under the tutelage of Dawn and her staff, but the agencies that we hadn't reached out to, for instance, the partnership with Head Start and having Head Start classrooms within our own, our own public schools.
Is this also mostly, is it mostly for the pre-K, or is it children who never went to pre-K, you know?
It's for both. It's for both. Yeah, when we have transition meetings and welcome-to-K meetings, we offer them to the entire community at large. We host them at the public library, so that it's a comfortable, welcoming space for any student or any child to attend.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Michelle has a point.
And Mr. Rizzo also allowed for some of the agenders to meet with parents in case they have specialized questions regarding their students, knowing where their home school was, and a couple of us have been in their department in their...
Excuse me. Thanks for that. That's good.
Thank you, Nichelle.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you.
Oh, are you done?
All set, thank you. We covered that with the content.
Obviously, the topic for, you know, excellent presentation is math and English, or math and reading, I should say. In the course of a day in elementary school, how much time is spent in math in all its different aspects, and the same thing with reading and all its different aspects that you explained?
Sure, so our elementary...
Everything, everything's about reading and math, so...
Right, and they lead to other things. They're connected to the other core content, so, yes. Our elementary math block is about 60 minutes. I believe our ELA block is 90?
Ninety minutes.
Ninety minutes. Middle school and high schools, it depends on their day, because some, they have blocks, like on a Wednesday, they have a longer extended block, but it's typically about 45 minutes, I think, in the middle school, or 42 minutes, actually, and about 45, I think, at the high school. We have high school...
I was more focused on the elementary, because that's where the talent, I mean, the skills are learned.
We also encourage our teachers to really think about their professional judgment in utilizing the time as efficiently as possible. So if, for instance, they had a need to spend more time in literacy on a day, and they lessen the amount of time that they needed to spend on math, then they can make that time up the next day, because they need to understand the ultimate goal is proficiency in both areas. So they learn to balance that.
One thing I'd like to add, I had the pleasure on Monday to walk into Dr. McGee's office and to hand him, every, every year I have to sign off with the Department of Education to let them know what curriculum we're using, and this is the first time, and I was very excited when I came into Dr. McGee's office on Monday to hand him the paperwork this time, because all of our sections were green. That means they were all greenlit, and they are considered high-quality instructional material. It's the first time since I took over this role that I've been able to say that, and I'm very, very happy to say that we have a fully greenlit curriculum for ELA and math, K-12.
Nice, very nice. I had the pleasure to receive that from Dr. Holt, and I've got to say, Dr. Holt and, you know, and Mrs. Rizzo, and really all of the directors and, you know, staff have done an amazing job of getting us to where we are in terms of having greenlit curricula, because, you know, as the committee's aware, we've talked about this in the past, you know, the Department of Ed says you have to have greenlit curricula, and we've done a stupendous job, and, you know, thanks to Dr. Holt for all the work that she's done with, with staff across the district to ensure that that's, that's happened.
Yeah. And with that, I'm all set.
Think you're up to me again.
You're still up?
I'm still up. So the last agenda item under Communications is the Nonviolence Institute here in Providence. Committee is well aware, last year, we had some situations at our high school and at our middle schools around fighting and violence, and some of those incidents spilled in from things that happened in the community. Some of those things were, were specific to what, you know, might have happened at the, at the school, at either, each of the schools themselves. So at that time, we, I looked into, you know, what, what organizations, what support is there out in the community that could come into One Socket based on their track record and provide support to us around, you know, sort of re-establishing the climate of nonviolence. So we had a variety of meetings with the folks from the Nonviolence Institute, and I am very, very excited to announce that we are just about ready to start that partnership with them. We have a memorandum of understanding, which is being worked out, and we're hopeful that in a week or so, that, that MOU will be signed by, by the Nonviolence Institute and by the One Socket Education Department. So I'm very, very excited to, to start the partnership with the Nonviolence Institute. And this evening, we have two gentlemen from the Nonviolence Institute, Mr. Cedric Huntley, who is the... who is the executive director, and Mr. Sal Montero. And Cedric is going to speak to the committee this evening about what it is they do and how they can best support the One Socket Education Department moving forward. So Cedric, if you don't mind, coming to the podium?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. As, as Dr. McGee said, we are the Nonviolence Institute. I'm Cedric Huntley, and I have Sal Montero here with me as a longtime nonviolence trainer. First, I'd like to just say, the conversations that we've had, you know, since last year, I think One Socket is doing some tremendous strides towards creating environment for your students to get educated. I mean, that's, that's, that's really the goal, right? And we come in as, as a partner, we come in to support what you do, and we deal with community violence. The Nonviolence Institute has been around for 21 years, started in Providence, but we are Nonviolence Rhode Island, Nonviolence Institute of Rhode Island. And we have been working in, in Providence and branched out to Central Falls, branched out to Pawtucket, branched out to other areas in Rhode Island, dealing with the community violence. It, it's real. The community violence, as you know, as all educators know, is very real in the schools, and especially after COVID. And the students have to come in and navigate through a tremendous amount of trauma that they may have dealt with in their, in their homes, in their communities, in their neighborhoods. And that's what we, we deal with. Usually, it's in the urban core areas. But the students are struggling right now. We see an uptick in, in, in physical violence in schools throughout, throughout the state, throughout the state. So we're pleased to really be working with, as a partnership with One Socket. And we have, we bring with us our, our team. So we are a team, we have intervention services, which are advocates that deal with community violence, and, and then we have outreach specialists that, that deal with the gang and, and violence that happens in our, in our communities. And then we have this, the training team, which we have been, we are trained in Kangian philosophy, and, and we've been, we think we, we think we make an impact when we are able to come in and, and teach the components and principles of nonviolence and, and the levels of, of violence and what that means. Internal violence is, is, is really part of that, you know? You may not, we, we deal with that. We deal with forgiveness and we also, the, your schools talked about kindness, right? We, we deal with the kindness of, and we promote kindness, and we promote activities that engage the, the students and staff to, to start to recognize what those levels of, of violence could mean to your, to the culture of your school. Over the years, I've had the experience of, I've worked in education 21 years. You know, I have a master's in education, but I worked in education at, at a local, at the med school for, for 18 years. And I talked to Dr. McGee around what that really meant in building a culture, building a safe culture through the nonviolence principles. And I've seen it work. I've seen it. I've seen a reduction in physical fights because, because of the care and attention that's given to those needs of the students is very important in, in preventing violence that happens internally. Violence that happens in the community spills into the schools, and violence that happens in the schools spills into the community. It's cyclical, right? And, and we understand that, and, and we know that how important it is to have partnerships and to really speak to those issues that are, that are happening with those, with the students that are, you know, in the One Socket School Department. So we are, our background, we are, we're, we have a staff of 23 individuals that care, passionate about the work. And, and we look forward to really working with you. We, we don't want to come in, we're not trying to change anything. We're trying to add value to what you're already doing. And the presentations from all, from high school to the elementary and middle schools were really so important, and they, the components of nonviolence is in everyday, the everyday things that you do. I know Sal could, could say, we recognize, oh, that's, that's a component of nonviolence, you know, when you talk about kindness and when you talk about anti-bullying, when you, so we are very pleased, just as I said, to really start to work with you in a real way. And it's, it's very intentional. I think we're, we're coming in and we're going to, in phases, begin to strategically think about and how to implement nonviolence and into, into what you do every day to educate your students. So, Sal, if you want to say anything, come on.
Yeah. Thank you. Sal Montero, nonviolence trainer. I've been at the institute for 17 years, but I've been studying and practicing nonviolence for almost 30 years now. Just a couple of quick things. I loved everything I heard from all the teachers here. I mean, I want to come to this school now after hearing that. There's two things I really want to point out with this whole part. I'm very proud of this partnership. As a trainer, I've been into many schools. I've gone into, I've taught fifth grade at Moses Brown. I teach a course at Providence College with Keith Morton. So we've been asked to come to a lot of schools in my time at the Nonviolence Institute. And the one thing that makes this partnership work even more is that a lot of times the school, the teachers will be like, you know, we have a problem with our young kids, can you come in? We have a lot of bullying, we have fights and violence, can you come in and work with these kids? And they want us to come in for a couple hours, do the work, and then expect a miracle to happen, which is not, it's not going to work that way. Nonviolence is not something that you try for two weeks and then when you don't see the results, you go back to the drawing board, right? So when going into these schools, I would go into the schools and I would work with the young kids, but then I realized it's not the kids that are being violent, it's the teachers. Some teachers are bullies. As I said, the young lady said earlier, you know, bullying is not just pushing each other and, you know, taking somebody's lunch. It's how you treat each other, right? And I've noticed a lot of times in schools, and I'm not saying this is about any of the teachers here, but a lot of times, a lot of the problems is the communication between the teachers and the students. So with this partnership, I'm so glad that the staff are, is heavily involved in it, and that's going to make a big difference. When we have teachers and students learning together, learning a new language, changing the culture, changing the environment, so that's, that's very important. And, and the second thing is, again, this is over a few years, I believe, right? And we have to be patient, but we have to remain committed. We can't give up. We can't be like, oh, it's not working, we're not seeing the results that we want. We are dealing with young people that, for a lot of them, are leaving violent homes, walking through violent communities to a violent school or to come, you know, this is the one place, out of anything, where they should be safe, it should be a learning environment, they shouldn't be worried about fights and getting piped and stuff like that. And there are a lot more kids that want safe space than there are kids that want a violent space. I believe that 100%. So I ended with that, looking forward to working with all of you. If it was up to me, I'd start teaching nonviolence from the delivery room. But this is, hey, the earlier we can get, the better. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Let me ask you something, both of you. You said, and I'll paraphrase, that you like what you saw and heard from our principals.
Yes.
They are addressing attendance, they're addressing anti-bullying. What exactly are you going to do?
Reinforce a lot of that. There's language around nonviolence when we talk about compassion, when we talk about kindness, when we talk about levels of violence, what violence looks like. For a lot of people, they say, oh, I'm not punching nobody, I'm not kicking nobody, so I'm not being violent. But internally, spiritually, emotionally, they are dealing with violence and issues. And what we do as a nonviolence institute, the first thing we do is to create a space where young people can talk about the violence, where young people can develop relationships, encouraged and confidence to talk, whether it's talk to their peers or whether it's talk to their teachers. These young people know what's going on out in the community, but they are afraid to talk to teachers, they're afraid to talk about it. So one of the main things is creating a space and a comfort where our young people can have that conversation about what violence is, about the trauma and the issues that they are facing, that maybe they, in another space, want to talk about. That's just one piece of it.
And it's, and it's the shared, it's really the shared language that we, we train educators on and, and the students on. And you'll be surprised, just, we did a program at a middle school last year, and we probably had about maybe 50 students, sixth grade students. And what we found after, we did a six-week program, and what we found after the six weeks, those students started to speak the language and started to recognize the violence, and they started to
Call out.
Call out violence, right? And, and, or share with, share with the trusted adult in that, in that school that something was going to happen. And that's the, that's the seed that we, we began, and we, we, we think is very, very important. The, it's the consistency of doing a program, it's not, it's the, it's not the start, it's the stops that really prevent a program and, like nonviolence, from really taking, taking a hold in, in school. So we want to start, we don't want to stop, we want it to be consistent. And I think over time, it changes the culture of, and helps the educators educate and help those students really understand that they have the power to stop, you know, stop bullying, to, to call out and recognize. And you're already doing some tremendous, some tremendous work in, in One Socket School. So that's what we add to. We're just partners, and we're, we're not here to, you know, as Sal said, work, work miracles, but make a difference. I think that's, that's the most important thing.
All the social and emotional issues and trauma that our young people deal with. And it also, you know, as I look around the room, as I was talking to Gigi, people that look like them also having that conversation with them, right? As a, as a person that spent 13 years in prison, there's a lot of life experience that I can share with them. And I look like a lot of the young people that, as I'm looking at the numbers and stuff, 1% of teachers of color, I believe, it's very low, I believe, right? So I think that is a very important, that we can't deny, as we do this work, is talking with young people that they can relate to. So that's, again, there's a laundry list of things that we can do. And I think the biggest piece is the actual energy when you are in a training, right? You can't describe, Gigi might be able to describe it because she had worked with Gigi years back, but when you are in an actual training, the, the energy, the feeling of being in the room, the conversations that, that we have, it's so tremendous, it's so strong. Just on the first day of a nonviolence training, well, we do a couple of exercises that really opens up the kids, that makes them feel safe, for them to tell us what they need. Like, we can sit here and tell kids what we want them to do all day, but who is actually, are the kids actually asking what they need and speaking to what they need and what they're seeing? And I think that is also a big part of, of what we can do, help, as Mr. Cedric said, partner, because this is, it affects all of us. We're from Providence, but what happens in One Socket affects us. It, what happens in One Socket affects people in Providence, you know? So as a community, it's work that we all can do, and we can all share in the, sharing the, putting our fingers and hands into the, into the pot.
Yeah. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? Dr. McGee? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna speak to sort of what, what they were talking about in, in terms of, this, this has to happen within, and when I say this has to happen within, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the high school as an example. There, there are adults there that, that work very hard, that support students, that are mentors to students. Students have adults there that they can go to. And oftentimes, you know, we tell students, this, this is how it has to go, right? These, these are the rules. But I think what's important here is, is building this from the students. And there are a lot of student leaders at One Socket High School. Great example, Mr. Guio discussed earlier this evening, we have almost 90 peer mentors. So there, there, there is a, there's a cadre of students at the high school, there's a cadre of students at both middle schools who are leaders, and I think that's where we have to build this. And I think that's where the Nonviolence Institute can help support us to work with those students so that we can build it from within and we can establish truly an environment where students respect one another, students treat one another kindly, students are there for one another, students, if they hear something or see something, will go to someone and say something. I think those are a lot of the things that they can provide, this, this district and this community, because it's not just the school district. A lot of the things that have been happening start out there and work their way in here, and they can help us to support that piece of, of this puzzle. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not, it's going to take time. It took time for us to get to where we are. So, you know, it's not a panacea, but they're here to provide us with supports that we didn't already have. And like I said, I'm very optimistic that in working with the Nonviolence Institute and in utilizing the resources we have in the district, because there are a lot of great things, and you heard it tonight, great things that are happening, I think we can only strengthen the, the environment that we have here in the district.
One more piece, Dr. McGee?
Sure. Yep.
Less than 60 seconds. The only piece that hasn't been mentioned that I want to respond to the chairman's question has to do with building a system for communicating information, because we're only as good as the information that we get. And right now, we're limited in the information that we're receiving from the streets and from the community. So I think that the places where they've been very effective before in Central Falls and Providence and Pawtucket is they establish kind of a weekly cabinet meeting where you're sharing information right after the weekend. And if you're lucky, you've got the police chief involved in that information sharing as well, not, not like privacy information, but just saying, this happened on Saturday Not, not like privacy information, but just saying, this happened on Saturday night. This happened on Sunday morning. These people are students in your high school or in your middle school. And the faster we get on that information and are able to convalesce around some solutions, and then even looking ahead and saying, you have this event coming up in the middle of November, and typically there's been violence at that event, or we know that events like that in Providence have often come with different things, it allows us to share information and plan proactively as well as to respond quickly when things do happen. So I just want to add that piece too, because part of our contract with them eventually, when we settle on it, will be to build some infrastructure for regular communication sharing and a flow of, of, of sharing of information and how that kind of gets done in a timely way. So I just want to put that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file all of the presentations received this evening. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school committee, I have two agenda items this evening under my report. First, personnel matters update. The district is, as you know, still working feverishly to, to, to fill as many positions as possible. From the last school committee meeting to today, we filled a total of five full-time positions. An English ESL teacher, Wunsaket High School, a second-grade transition teacher at Savoy, chemistry teacher at Wunsaket High School, an ELA teacher at Villanova Middle School, and a kindergarten ESL teacher at Bothier. So we're continuing to, as quickly as we can to fill these, these remaining positions that are, that are unfilled in the district. My second agenda item is I just wanted to give you just a brief update. It's actually, you, you heard it from some of the principals here this evening. Across the, the district, as, as you're all aware, October is National Bullying Prevention Month.
Right.
And our schools are working very hard on a variety of activities, initiatives, different types of things to promote anti-bullying. We had the, the Roar Show, which is, is, is come to our schools, to most of our elementary schools. It's the Respect Others, Act Responsibly show. And that is an assembly in, in which students are, are taught respect, respecting others and acting responsibly. It's, and there's also an anti-bullying message that's sent in there as well. So just want, again, I, I want to reiterate that the district is doing a lot around promoting safe, secure environments where students feel comfortable coming to school every day and promoting a sense of community and a sense of being kind to, to their peers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Any comments, questions for Dr. McGee?
Nope.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We have one subcommittee report tonight. It's the technology update. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The technology subcommittee met recently on Tuesday, October 11th, at 6 o'clock in this building. And we dealt with a few items of the agenda, obviously mostly dealing with, with Chromebooks. So I will turn this over to Mr. Notorani, who will tell us the rest of the details.
Thank you. So more or less, we had a discussion about purchasing additional Chromebooks at the secondary level.
Yes.
We did have a, a discussion at the last school committee meeting regarding this particular item. So without going into detail or being repetitive, we are going to purchase new Chromebooks for both middle schools and the high school and the career tech center to replenish our fleet and bring them up to the newest possible technology and taking the existing Chromebooks that are in those school buildings now and push them out into the loaner carts along with the elementary schools, so that all students will have access to a device during the classroom day. And our high school and career tech center will continue to have a one-to-one take-home laptop program. So that more or less encapsulates the, the big discussion that we had that evening. As Ms. Perry is just reminding me, we've already ordered those. We anticipate them coming in later in November. And the technology department, if you may recall, will be taking over the process of distributing the Chromebooks moving forward. And we'll be doing that, I anticipate, sometime in December or January, depending upon how quickly the Chromebooks arrive.
Hand me down Chromebooks. Are those in good operating order? So, you know, the, the students that receive them, obviously you want to make sure they're running and, and all that stuff.
So we will collect them and we will go through all of them.
That's what I mean. You are going to go through them.
Yes. And then we will, we deploy them. So we haven't announced it to the staff, but we anticipate being one-to-one in grades K1 and 2.
Right.
Curriculums 3, 4, and 5 already should have a Chromebook for each student. So when we're done, everyone will have a Chromebook here in the district.
Very well. We had one more item that dealt with the telephone system repairs at the high school. Anything you can add to that?
Yes. So we had a system failure at the high school, we believe due to a power outage. We've ordered additional parts based on an emergency purchase. The parts have been ordered. Unfortunately, we received word, I think it was last week, that the parts are on back order until at least November 4th. In the meantime, we've been working with the high school administration to pass out walkie-talkies and radios. There's a patchwork system we have in place so that we can keep communication open at the high school. At this time, I have nothing else to update you on that.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, thank you.
Very good.
Good job. Any questions, comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll turn to Mr. Perrier for the finance update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is the September 2022 fiscal update. Currently, we are projected to end the year with $176,000 surplus. Of course, it's very early in the year. There's still a lot of the year to go. So it is a very early projection. Nonetheless, that is what it is. At the time, at this time, there is really nothing to report out revenue-wise. We are pretty much on board or on par across the, across the board there. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $2.806 million under budget at this time. And when netted with the employee turnover allowance of $1.470 million, so put the overall salaries, $1.336 million under budget. Substitute salaries line is projected to be $244,000 over budget due to several vacancies spread across the district at this time, which is kind of, which makes sense when you look at the savings on the regular salaries. Medical expenses are currently $493,000 over budget. Now, this is, this is a little concerning. It's been a very rough first quarter for the school department as far as medical expenses go. These are the highest medical expenses that I've seen since pre-COVID. It seems that, I think people are using, utilizing the doctor more. And I also think there is a rise in insurance costs. I think you can see that nationwide right now. So this is really starting to hit home here. And this is something that we're going to have to keep an eye on as the year goes on, much like we always do. But it was, I don't want to say alarming first quarter, but it was higher than, higher than anticipated. So this is something that we're going to keep an eye on. Again, we do have some money set aside as far as reserve for medical. And also will be, when we get to our next finance subcommittee meeting, which we're going to have before the end of the year, we're going to be talking about utilizing, possibly using our OPEB funds. We have about $800,000 in there as well, and that may help defray some of the costs that we're looking at this year. Additional speech therapists, contracted nursing services, and behavioral interventionists have all been needed this year beyond what was originally budgeted. We're going to monitor this expense and decide if we need to move these expenses off to SER 3 by mid-year. I think we'll talk about that during the finance subcommittee as well, the status of both SER 2 and SER 3, and put together the plans for the final spendouts for those programs as well. Personal care attendants are $650,000 over budget at this time. We did not budget anything for personal care attendants. But again, if you look at the, how far under budget we are on salaries, this kind of makes sense, because a lot of the vacancies that we're looking at in the salary line are related to these personal care attendants. So we have gone out, we've contracted with people to get, we've contracted with services to get the people into the spots. We're going to monitor this as the year goes on. If we are able to bring in some PCAs, then that will eliminate the need for the, the contracted services going forward. So again, that's something that we're going to continue to watch. We currently have expenses on the general fund at this time for building improvements, furniture and fixtures, and technology hardware. We are able to move these off to our capital improvement funds and our technology funds. And we haven't done it yet. We're, we're okay as far as the general fund goes. But as the year goes on, if we see a spike in any of these expenses, we do have those other funds to fall back on. As I stated at the start, we're looking at $160, $176,000 surplus at this time. But we do, just, just to let everybody know, we do have a tremendous amount of flexibility as far as SER 3 goes. And we are doing a pretty good job of spending it down right now. By my calculations, we've probably spent about $6 million of the SER 3 of the 29 so far. So we're going to have a little bit more that we're going to be reserving for our capital improvement funds. We're going to, as that continues to go. So we also have the LEAP funds that we've really, that's $8 million there that we've just begun to scratch the surface on. So I, I'm very confident moving forward that we continue to go down the expenditure route that we're traveling right now. I think it's really good. This is the money we have to spend. We need to spend it in the next two years. So I think we are on a good expenditure track. But, you know, just as kind of how I, how I've been saying, this next year is going to be fine. The year after is going to be fine. But, but we are kind of coming to the end of the SER funding. So things are going to get very interesting, you know, when we get a couple of years out. But as of right now, as of right this fiscal year, I like the way that we're spending. And I'd like to see that continue on throughout the end of the year. If the school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them now.
Let's talk about medical for a minute. When you say we're, we're over budget or over, it's not like the total expenditure is over budget. Is it just you looked at the first quarter?
I'm projecting that first quarter out, basically multiplying it by four.
Right. So that doesn't mean, doesn't mean anything.
Oh, no. Absolutely. It means absolutely nothing.
That is the worst possible case at this time.
Yeah.
Because you've got actuals, but you don't know what, what's going to happen to the remaining budget that you have.
It could be worse. It could get worse. So we, we don't, I, I, hopefully it doesn't, but
Mr. Perrier, we all know it could be worse.
Yeah, yeah. It can always get worse.
That's a given. But I'm saying in terms of looking at an over-budget situation, it's that you projected it out.
Yeah, precisely.
So estimates are good because they're not real yet. Because if they were, then we'd really be in trouble.
I, I don't think we'd be in trouble. I think we'd be okay.
Well, you'd have to go, you'd have to pull monies out of different reserves.
We do have that flexibility, though. I just want to make it clear that, you know, really, there's not going to be, not any problems this fiscal year.
I'm sorry for boring you there, Mr. Leclerc. The budget is there near my heart, so I want to make sure I understand everything. And we're starting to use the ESERS. I see in the purchases, we had some
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're, we're actually just about done with SER 2 at this point. We do have some expenses on the books through the end of this fiscal year. I think our SER 2 is going to be wrapped up probably February, March of this year. And then there'll be a few expenses that we're going to need to transfer over to SER 3 to get us through the close of the year.
Any questions for Mr. Perrier, Mr. Leclerc?
None. He explained it wonderfully.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a finance update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morale, would you give us your special education update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you are the snapshot numbers. That's pretty much all I have this evening for you. Right now, the total number of students receiving IP services from pre-K to 12 within our school buildings is 1,365 students. Our average total number of students right now receiving services is at 24.7%. That is slightly higher than September. But I did mention last month that it would be going higher because new students coming in, our kindergarten students that are, that are in the middle of evaluations, that are becoming identified and receiving services. So I do foresee that number increasing over the next few months. And our total population right now of students is 5,500, I'm sorry, 5,525 students. The last time I reported out, Mrs. Kepiscus, you had asked about the DLM numbers. I was able to reach out to Heather Heinecke at the state of Rhode Island. She oversees the, all the testing for the state. And she was able to give me the numbers for the last couple of years. So for the 2021 school year, our ELA was at 2.13% and our math was at 2.17%. So how they factor in the DLM, the DLM is the alternate assessment for students that cannot take the RICAS. They are given to students in grades three through eight and grades 11. They take all the students that take the RICAS and the SATs. They take the total number of students from grades three through eight and grades 11, and they divide that by the number of students that take the DLM. And that is supposed to give us that 1% number. And we're supposed to try and stay as close to 1% as we can. We've always historically have always been over the 1% because you can't really, you know, if the student needs to be on the DLM, they need to be on the DLM. However, in years past, in, right now in 21, 22, the number is at, for ELA, 1.83% and for math, 1.79%. So it has gone down a, a little bit. We have been staying roughly around 50 students, give or take, each year that take the DLM. They don't have the numbers right now for the 22, 23 school year because there are some third graders that throughout the school, third grade year, end up qualifying to take the DLM. And we usually do that before the springtime, so they're ready to take that test. But she did let me know that we are holding steady and it's, we're not creeping up or going down. But the number does fluctuate because of our enrollment. Our enrollment comes down, our number goes up because our students, the 50 students stay the same. But the other enrollment, depending on how it sways, will make us either look really good and go down closer to 1% or look really bad and go higher. So hopefully, we have a lower number come to the 23, 20, 22, 23 school year. But she said that we've been holding steady at around 50. Do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions, comments, Ms. Morale? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Notoriani to give us the Building Capital Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this past Monday afternoon, we met in room 124 at Hamlet. We had two items on the agenda. One was a discussion and update by our newest architects. We got in the five-year capital plan and the cadence timeline to submit an application for February 15th. The architects walked us through the timeline with suggested meeting dates and advised us that they, they felt that they could have the application completed by the February deadline. In addition to that, we had a discussion about the P3 proposal and an update on, on where we are with that status. And I believe the meetings are ongoing over the next several weeks. And the Department of Education would come back and provide us with further information in, in the near future. And the last thing we discussed under the umbrella of those two items was a potential visit to the Pell Elementary School in Newport. I believe it's for some time in November. Although the date has not been confirmed as of today. And that concludes the items we discussed, Mr. Chairman.
The, I must say, the architect, the new architects are very impressive. When they interviewed, it was one heck of a presentation. And what they did this past week was equally impressive. You know, I feel very comfortable in having our work in their hands. They're very professional and they get right at the issues. And they're very active, which is excellent. So we'll have our information sooner than later for us to discuss and approve, which will then come to the school committee for approval.
I would agree, Chairman. I meant to, failed to mention that. We did have a visioning session last night. It was productive, informative, almost enlightening, I would say. It was, I, I liked it. It was good. So I forgot about that. Thank you, Chairman.
Yep. Any other comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Building Capital Committee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the facility rental policy and fee schedule for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Are there any further Second by Mrs. Costa. Are there any further discussion, any further discussion on this?
I think so, right.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, in new business, we have one item. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid number 23-06, Community Solar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Mr. Leclerc. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier, because I don't know if this is going to fly tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, now, I'd like the school committee to table this item this evening. Uh, just to give you a little background, uh, what we currently have, what you currently have in front of you has to do with a new solar array that's being built in the Warren area. Uh, we, we contracted with a vendor who helped us go through a RFP process, uh, as far as getting bids for solar panels to be built on another location. Just to stress, there won't be any solar panels going up on buildings here. This is a separate location that we are basically buying into. And the takeaway here is that, uh, if we do sponsor this and move forward, we'll be looking at saving approximately 45% on our electricity bills going forward. Uh, I think that's a very significant savings. Right now, Rhode Island has a lot of incentives out there for vendors to come forward, uh, build these solar arrays. And, and we would like to sponsor that and quite frankly, get in on the savings right now while we can. So, uh, just to let you know why we want to table it, there are some, uh, legal things that I'm working through with Ms. Raport to make sure that everything is, uh, on the up and up. It, it is, of course, but we just want to verify everything, uh, from a legal perspective that we're doing, we're able to do. Uh, there are some tenant hold improvements, uh, tenant hold agreements that we want to make sure that, that we're okay with. And once we get that, uh, information, once our legal team will talk to their legal team, we get these final answers, we'll be ready to move forward with this project.
Is it too early to, to, just to announce who that, who we're working with?
Uh, I, I believe it's next, next stamp. Yeah. That those, those were the, they had the best percentage back on the bid, which was 45%. We actually did have quite a bit of, uh, interest in this. We had eight vendors, I believe, bidding on this. Um, and just for some clarification, the vendor that we're working with, they recently did the same thing in Massachusetts. Uh, they received three, uh, bids in Massachusetts and the percentage that they were saving was 10%. So that this really shows you how ramped up it is here in Rhode Island as far as this initiative goes. And like I said, I think this is the perfect time to strike and, uh, really create some significant savings for the district for the upcoming years.
If we table this, this would come in, come onto our agenda next, for our next meeting. Will that, will you be ready for then at that point? November 16th. Because we have only one meeting in November. Okay. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing. Uh, there will be no cost to the district for the setup of this, uh, solar array either. So there, there's no cost. That will be handled by the vendor and, uh, we'll be able to, uh, reap the savings off of that.
Then I'll make a motion to table this item till our next meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
On the tabling, Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
We have no other items on our agenda. I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:55 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.